Who's in charge? Who's starting? All right, on your call.
Ready guys? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome. Now, while you're here, turn around, come up here and turn around and face that way. We're gonna get a big group picture. Big group picture. And we're gonna get.
Something.
I think the parents are gonna come behind us.
Oh yeah. Tell them I'm standing on the border thing.
What?
Don't tell them I'm standing on the elevated.
Jack, don't get me in trouble when I, don't ask me too serious of questions. All right. Everybody here?
Almost.
Actually, we're supposed to share a second question.
Yeah, come on up here. Yeah, then you can get in here. There you go.
As a photographer once told me, if you can't see me, I can't see you. So.
Oh, that's good.
That's right. Yeah, it is.
I did say that.
All right, ready? One, two, three, keep smiling. Perfect. We got a few more, a few more.
Nobody can share them. We gotta take our own.
All right, one, two, three.
Awesome, babe. We'll pass them around.
Yep. The time that I was here.
Yes, I do remember.
All right, thanks everyone. Now we're gonna go to our item three. Is Lisa not up here yet? Whoa. Where happened?
Sprint across the room.
And Elise is gonna call roll, please.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Here. Here. All right, moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some of.
Motion by councilmember Hubbard, second. Second by councilmember Grabah to approve the agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're gonna move to item five, which is the proclamation, which is why all the Boy Scouts are here tonight. So tonight, we're our proclamation celebrating their 50th anniversary of Chaska Boy Scouts Troop 174. And I have a proclamation. And Mark and Shannon, if you'd be at the podium. I have a proclamation in recognition of 50th anniversary of Chaska Boy Scouts Troop 174. Whereas the Boy Scout organization was founded in 1910 by Lord Baden Powell to train youth in responsible citizenship, character development, self-reliance through participation in a wide range of outdoor activities, educational programs, and career-oriented programs in partnership with the community organizations. And whereas the Chaska Boy Scout Troop 174 charter organization created by Crown of Glory Lutheran Church began in January 1974 and is now the only remaining scout BSA troop in Chaska. Whereas Troop 174 has given back to the community through numerous service projects, many of which have been completed by individuals who have attained their highest level of participation by earning the status of Eagle Scout. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Lynn Shuttle, the mayor of the city of Chaska, on behalf of Chaska City Council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as the 50th anniversary month of Chaska BSA Troop 174. In witness whereof, I hereon do set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska this eighth day of January in the year of our Lord 2024. With that, I will present this to you guys. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it, Shannon. Thanks for all your work. And I think Kevin, oh, you got it? Oh, yeah, now you gotta turn.
Make sure you can see Kevin.
It's a little easier. All right, one, two, three. Perfect.
All right. You turn around and start talking now.
I was gonna say, we've actually got our first Eagle Scout tonight and our first female Eagle Scout here tonight, so.
Dave Larson. Abigail Moldauer.
And what's really neat is Eric's son is in the troop now. His first Eagle Scout of this troop and his son's going through now. So that's one of the many cool stories.
Eric's father was actually the founding Scout Master 174, but unfortunately he's not with us anymore.
Lloyd, yep.
You're dating yourself, window.
He knew me well.
I would say the stories I heard.
We don't need him. Not here.
And we would like to invite you all to a reception that we're having on January 27th. I believe I emailed most of you, if not all of you, at Crown of Glory Lutheran Church. We're having donuts and coffee and just kind of a short program from nine to 11 a.m. and that's the last Saturday in January. So hope you can come, have a donut and a cup of coffee and celebrate with us.
Share some stories.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna touch on one thing. Mark has been involved with, with the scouting program for 30 years. His kids have been long gone out of there and he stayed with it and. That's right. And I know, even though he's gonna step back from his big roles, he's still gonna be part of the, part of the Boy Scouts. So I, I think that that's quite an accomplish accomplishment by itself to, to put 30 years in the Scouts. I don't know too many people that probably do that anymore. So congratulations, Mark, and probably not retiring, but you're just stepping, stepping aside for someone else to take over. So, but I, you know, I, I think about some of the Eagle Scout projects. I know I helped a gentleman before they had a flag at Chaska Elementary. I helped, helped them put a flagpole in and do some landscaping around there. So I know that a lot of the Eagles Scout projects are still out and within the community. I don't know them all and I don't think really anybody knows exactly how many Eagle Scouts do we? Does anybody know, Mark? Do you know?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. So we've had ninety-six Eagle Scouts. So that's, that's quite a few. I mean, that's two a year.
The national average is four percent to make Eagle. So we're running more thirteen, fourteen percent of our Scouts make Eagle.
Accomplishment.
So I just wanna say congratulations to the fifty, fifty years. I appreciate it. And I know there's some fine young men out here that will continue that on. And there's probably, based on our numbers, we've probably got two or three Eagle Scouts coming up yet out of this group.
I hope so.
So, all right, well, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. And it's great to have so many people leading in the pledge of allegiance. A lot of times it's just six, eight of us up here. So it's great to hear that kind of a volume. So thank you all for helping us out tonight. All right, with that, we will move to visitor presentation. Is there anyone here for visitor presentation, not on an agenda item? And if you guys gotta go, you are, don't, just go ahead. I, I get it. So. See y'all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Not seeing anybody. Krista, there's nobody online?
No one is online.
Okay. All right, then we'll move to item seven, approving the previous meeting minutes from twelve eighteen twenty-three. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Same, opposed, same sign. Carries. All right, moves to item eight, consent. Consent are items that need approval, but not necessarily conversation, but any and all may be pulled or questioned at any point. So with that, is there anyone who has any comments or questions on consent? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by councilmember Wong. Second by councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Carries. All right, moves us to action item. So tonight, first one is a public hearing on the 2024 development fees, planning, application fees, building, and fire permit fees.
Eric, councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is a process that we go through each year to set our development fees. So those are the fees that help pay for the actual cost of development when a developer comes in to the community. It is a public hearing. I'm gonna let Nate go through staff report to explain sort of what fees are included and what we're recommending for an increase.
Thanks, Matt. Mayor, council members. The, the fees in front of you tonight in the, in the proposed ordinance amendment are for development, planning, building inspections, and fire. They relate to expenditures on the city's part that would not be expended for these activities occurring and the need for the fees to be paid. So things that come out of, of, you know, these activities that incur costs in the city would include infrastructure expenditures, staff time involved for development review as an example, or maybe a permit review, administrative costs such as publishing, public hearing notices, and some of those things that need to happen for the process. And so generally, the development fees imposed are in line with other, what other communities charge and also reflect those costs that are incurred. City ordinance currently states that we go through this every year, as Matt mentioned, and review the fees. It's recommended that the development and planning fees, building permit fees, and rental dwelling license fees be increased by five percent this year to cover increased costs and other inflationary factors of 2024. This percent increase is consistent with the percentage that we use through the budget process this year as we're looking at inflationary, you know, influences on the budget as well. So you'll note, there are a few, a few fees in here that are an exception to that five percent rule. For one, it's the table one A, which is the building permit fees. Those are established under guidance by Minnesota State statute. And so we follow that for consistency. And so, and so, you know, that change is, is more influenced by the state level. There's also some other increases in the other inspections and fee section that are different from that five percent. Those are fees that are applied for inspections outside normal business hours, inspections, inspections where fees are not otherwise defined. Those fees have not been updated in some time, and I guess not otherwise defined by stat, state statute. I haven't finished that sentence. So these fees have not been updated in some time and they've become pretty significantly out of alignment with costs that are incurred for staff to do and administer these things. So as a result, we're proposing increases that are, you know, maybe a little bit, a little bit more than that five percent in order to play catch up on those a little bit. The changes to the fee structures, assuming council were to adopt them tonight, would be effective January 18th of this year. And there is a public hearing that's required for this action. There's any questions about what's being proposed? Happy to help answer that.
And I think I heard you, but I wanna make sure. So our, our fees are pretty much in line with the folks around us, the neighboring cities that, you know, I seem to hear that every now and then that we're expensive, but I just wanna make sure that.
Every few years, we do a more in-depth study. So we'll look at peer communities and understand their fee structures and take a look at how we align and make sure that we're not, you know, severely different. And what we've found, we just did that last year, actually, and we found that we were in alignment. So this is a year where we're gonna do more of the percent increase. And then, you know, next year, maybe in a couple of years, we'll go back out and do that study again.
Question that I asked, cause seems like we get that periodically. Again, any other questions? If not, I would move into the public hearing. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at seven fifteen. And just ask, is there anyone here that's here to speak on this particular item? Krista, anybody online?
No one is online.
Okay. All right, with that, we're gonna fast forward and, and at seven sixteen, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And with that, I would look for a motion. Motion by councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by councilmember Grabah to following a public hearing, motion to adopt ordinance 2024-1041, established in the 2024 development, planning, application, building, inspection, and fire fees. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Carries. All right, now we'll move on to item nine B, adopt resolution 2024-4, award bid for Chaska advanced metering, metering infrastructure.
Mayor and councilman, the item in front of you tonight is one that we talked about during the annual budget process, especially with electric, water, and sewer. As we discussed, we had an AMI meter reading system that was installed back in 2015. We've had significant issues with that over time to a point where we've really needed to abandon that. And we're currently in the process of negotiation slash litigation with that company for, for that product itself. But that being said, we still need to be able to move forward with business of, of, you know, this, this is in essence, our way of being able to determine exactly what utilities people use. And so we need to be able to, to move quickly to get ourselves back up and running and, and, and get ourselves to a point where we have a reliable meter reading system in place. With that being said, we have gone through the process and going through a bidding process to solicit bids from multiple companies. It's a little bit different than like a bid on a construction company because each meter is a little bit different. And so we put out specs to sort of talk about, here's, here's the things that we need a meter system to, to accomplish. And it may be that not, one may not be able to do everything. And so we look at sort of the lowest responsible bidder. And that's what we have staff from Power Systems Engineering, PSE, who we've been working with to help us in the evaluation of this bidding process. You can see in the staff report, we actually opened the bids back on September 28th. So it, this has been a very in-depth process. I think these, I think Pete and Nolan and Matt have probably spent more time looking at this over the last three months than probably most anything else that they, they've looked at. And they've done that in conjunction with Kyle from PSE evaluating this. So we're, we're really glad to be here tonight to come back with a recommendation of what direction to go. So I think I'll turn it over to Kyle and he's gonna come up and give a short presentation, really just sort of talking about the process and how we came up with the, the recommended bid. Because a recommended bid is not the lowest bid. It's the lowest responsible bid. And that's something that, that Kyle goes through and sort of talks about what that means.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I have a short, yep. Thank you. The magic in the back is, it's great. Fantastic. So yes, thank you so much. So I'm Kyle Copjack. I'm the manager of utility automation at Power System Engineering. We are, if you wanna go to the next few slides, one more, please. Thanks. That's perfect. We the map one, one.
Back up.
Yeah, three. Thank you. Perfect. So the little dots represent our client base throughout the U.S. So we, we are branched everywhere, but our headquarters is in Madison, Wisconsin, and also St. Paul, Minnesota. So that's where I'm located. I work out of the St. Paul office. I've been in the metering and AMI industry for the last 15 years, going through procurement, doing project management, doing deployment, doing integration work. So I'm an independent consultant. Me and my, my staff, my team are really here to help utilities, just like Chaska, to work through the complexities that we have when we're looking at AMI. So if you wanna go to the next slide here, you'll just see my face and then my colleague, Tom. Tom, as you can see here, he's been in the industry for thirty-plus years. So certainly his gray hair gives us a lot of credibility too as well, his expertise. He's been working also at some AMI vendors, but also in the consulting role for the last 25 years. So between the two of us, we have a lot of insight. We've seen a lot of things. I like to say we've, we haven't seen all of it, but we've definitely seen most of it. If you wanna go to the next slide there, please, and then the next one. So what we do is we go through and we look at an AMI process from a view of what's important and what isn't. I like to say if everything's important, then nothing is important. So what we have to do is go through and look at what is really the city of Chaska looking for? What, what are the really core components that come in with the next generation of AMI? So that's exactly what we're doing here is we're looking at any of those systems that meet those requirements. We're looking at performance. We're looking at planning and future growth. We're looking at a lot of long-term components. As it was mentioned, right, you have a system that is failing and we need to go to the next generation. And I want that absolutely to be, if I'm here again, it's in the next 15 years. And that's because that system has run its life. It's not anything that's been prematurely deprecated or abandoned for you. So what we're looking at, that's that second bullet, right? That's really the big thing, that early obsolescence and making sure that we're future-ready. I'm not saying future-proof. I'm just saying future-ready. So when we look at that horizon, we have a good idea of where we're looking, where we're headed and where we're going. Next slide there. Perfect. So what we have is through our selection, we have a number of prod, excuse me, documents that we put together. We look at not just including a master agreement and contract, which has been reviewed and looked at before it goes out, but also a number of other metrics, testing, breaking this into smaller pieces to make sure that we have everything ironed out. So all of those documents, everything that we have is included in the RFP. And that went out, excuse me, RFP, it's a bid, went out to all of the prospective vendors. And that was what came back. That was the response that we had. Next slide, please. So this is just giving you an idea. It isn't just something that we throw together. We have some thought. There's a process that we go through. This is really just the table of contents to say there's a lot of documents. There's a lot of items in here because of the complexity of the system. And we're looking at software. We're looking at hardware. We're looking at coverage. We're looking at read rate. There's a number of things that, there's a number of, I'll call them legs to this stool that we need to consider when we go through this. And not everyone's all the same. So we're looking to get apples to apples as close as we can. And, and make sure, again, we know exactly what we're, what we're purchasing and what we're gonna be getting. Next slide, please. So this is just screenshot. We don't need to zoom or anything. You don't really need to go through there. There's a number of requirements. I'm just giving you kind of a taste to say we didn't just pick three. We went and spent a lot of time with staff to go through and put some thought behind what really is important and what isn't. What do we need to throw away? What do we need to keep? Next slide, please. This is, again, part of the process. This is what comes back. This is a propagation study. This is really looking at coverage and read rate. This dictates how the system will perform. Just putting this in as an example to again say that as these bids come back, the process is to look at what that is. This is going to really show you how the network will perform. We expect this to come back. So right, the vendors are doing their homework. The bidders are doing their homework to make sure that you have the coverage, the long-term coverage that we're expecting and we're requiring. Next slide, please. And then the next one. So we're gonna look at, these are the list of the vendors that responded to the bid. We have a Clara Census, which was through their distributor, Corn Main, Eaton, Honeywell, Lanis and Gear, OETI, which is Open Access Technology International, Vision, and then Itron, which again was provided through their distributor, Wesco. My next slide. So we went through and we reviewed all of those. Each of those bids for compliance, each of those bids for meeting those core requirements of what we were actually looking for. And then what are those other components into it? Out of that process, we narrowed it down to Eaton and a Clara, the two that we needed to bring in as a demo situation. We needed to dig more into their response. They're also the ones that are in the most compliance to the bid that we requested for the requirements. So we developed a demo. The agenda went out to both of those vendors. People, exactly the same. And brought them in. And at the end of that, we spent four hours one day, four hours the next day, going through their bid in more detail. And at the end of it, Eaton was certainly the solution, in our opinion, in our recommendation, that provides the most value to the city of Chaska. Next slide, please. So this is giving you a, just a breakdown in cost to show you where all of the bids had come through. This is projecting it out 15 years. So what you have additionally in the documentation that was spread are the, the the, the packet, thank you, was my word. In the packet is a two-year cost. This, in our analysis too, we're stretching out because there are recurring and ongoing fees for software. What that may look like in a 15-year projection. So this is really, I'm just giving you an idea of where everything falls. And then a Clara is on your left and it's in alphabetical order. Then you have Eaton there. Those are the two compliant bids that we have. Okay, next slide. And this is really going through then, I, we don't need to go through all of this, this list, but why are we choosing Eaton? What are we really looking at? And the crucial part of this, I would say, is that there are a number of bulleted items here that Eaton is providing in their bid that check off a lot of those requirements that we have as a team to go through this process. And it's not just electric, it's water, it's the entire, it's both utility departments. Next slide. And then on here, I really will like the part of the, the last bullet there, the meter exchange. That exchange happens through a third party, but it's partnered with Eaton. Their approach is to have permanent vehicles, signage, and knowing where each of those installers are. So at any point, city staff can look at their application and know where the installers are, know where they should be. And if there's phone calls or issues, they can call. They're also local and very well organized. And so that really And so that really brings up a positivity to having that deployed there. Another extension of having, uh, city and utility staff out, out in the, uh, the field um, and representing the city. And so having somebody that's professional and knows what they're doing and has been in there a long time um, really reflects well as you're deploying a system because they're going to touch every house and they're going to touch every meter. And so you really want, again, you want them to represent you fairly well. Uh, integration is another key that's absolutely happening and they have the experience to do that. So the billing system that you have, the cash register stays open. Everyone is getting their bill on time and accurately. And there's a seamless integration, so we don't have manual processes that need to happen. Uh, next slide, if you would. And then that's where I have any questions that you have for me at this time. So again, we went through an extensive process, months and months of looking at requirements, looking at bids, narrowing it down, being active in choosing what is that truly best fit that meets all of the needs that we're looking for? And certainly Eaton is, is accomplishing that.
One of the things I'll point out is that, you know, we, we have a fairly complex utility system because, you know, we have water sewer, we have electric and, you know, not every city has electric. And so, um, you know, the, the things that we need to be able to, you know, pull out of the system, the information we need to pull out of the system, you know, not everybody can provide that, uh, you know, provide that product to be able to do that for it. And so I mean, you know, the, the best testament to, um, you know, really looking at the, the comfort level of this product are these three guys. I mean, that's, and certainly I'd, you know, encourage you, if you have any questions to, to ask them because they have spent a lot of time going through, uh, this whole product, uh, project. But I will say the one thing that, that Kyle brought up that I think is a real important one is, you know, we've already budgeted for this in our, in our budget that we set last year. So what we said as a budget matches up with what the actual costs are, uh, associated with the, uh, the bids here. Um, we know how to technically do what we need to do internally within our organization. But at the end of the day, where residents are going to see this is when somebody has to come to their house and actually switch out a meter, that's going to be the customer interaction. And whether people see this as being a successful project or an unsuccessful project, a lot of times drives right down to that, uh, that issue is if you have a professional staff that's coming out and representing themselves as if they are City of Chaska employees and understand that importance, um, that's going to be the biggest thing that residents are going to see as part of this, this process. Once a system is implemented, there is a lot of functionality for the, for the customer to be able to get some, uh, pretty significant data, uh, out of, uh, the system. And, and, you know, some people in residential homes, that, that means something. What really means something too is our industrial customers. And so, you know, the, the stuff that we're going to be able to pull out as data and be able to provide and be able to have people do a good analysis of how they're u- utilizing their utilities when they're using, um, you know, the peaks and, you know, what their demand is and all that. Um, this is going to provide us with a system that's a, going to be able to provide them with some really good reports that these guys will be able to pretty easily, uh, pull together for them. And they'll actually be a customer portal, uh, that they can actually go and pull that stuff themselves if they want to. So, uh, it, it makes it very functional for our businesses. Like I said, some residents care about that, some residents, they're more hands-off, but definitely for our businesses, it's a, a big deal. So, um, like I said, if you have questions technically, that's, that's the group that I am not the person to ask the technical questions to.
Is this the Eaton Corporation that is over, well, maybe is not based in In Prairie anymore, but is it different?
They're out of Plymouth.
Okay.
They, they have, if it's helpful, Eaton has a number of divisions. They actually make golf grips. They make light switches. They make cabinets. They make breakers. Uh, they also have a division, like Keith said, in, in Plymouth. Um, and then the installer's actually out of Baxter, Minnesota. Um, and then if I can add to the customer portal is out of St. Paul. So they're actually, all three are local to you.
Eaton and In Prairie's purchase.
Yeah, it was, uh.
The Danfoss, I think.
Yeah, Danfoss, but I think it's a different type of product they're making.
Yep, it is.
Yep.
Is there anything that this maybe is for the department has that, that we're like, oh, bummer, it doesn't have this? Or do we truly, you know? Is it a case where most of it's exciting, but it's missing this, but still the best option? Or is it really, it has literally everything we're so excited?
No, from the water department's perspective, uh, it does, it meets all of our needs. Um, you, you guys are familiar with, uh, our leak program that we go out into homes and help people and notify them. It has that and, and the, the customer portal, uh, what will be nice is people can set different alerts for themselves, whether it's a, um, it's, 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 it's amazing how far A M I has come in the last ten, ten plus years.
I was just reading a article about it.
This, this, this one will, yeah.
President.
Yeah.
Um, they didn't download the app to learn about their water. So that is a nice feature.
So two, two questions. One is, um, what's like the deployment timeframe for like rollout in terms of when would customers expect to see it? And would, you know, they have like, so yeah, we, we also, I assume we also like your residents advance notes. Hey, like this is the block of time will be coming around to your neighborhood and doing that, right?
It probably, one, once, you know, we, we will need to have, uh, a, a final agreement reached with Eaton. And, uh, it's going to be, electric meters are a big role is, is, uh, every entity has some delays and uh, did, do you remember how far they are?
Twenty, they're twenty to twenty-four weeks right now, lead times on electric. Um, I know that sounds long.
Weeks or months.
Weeks.
It's like six months.
It's about six months. I know.
Heard too.
That actually doesn't sound too bad.
Yeah, that, some of the breaker, we're seeing are actually four to five years.
Yeah.
And some of the other meters, uh, I think were much longer as well.
Wow, crazy.
Yeah. And, and so, and just, just so, uh, council is aware, uh, the water, there's, we're not exchanging water meters with us. It's just the module that reads the meters that are in homes. So we will, we have intentions of replacing no meters.
So once the, once the agreement is signed, then it'd still be like the lead time for getting the, getting the units out there. Then, you know, there, what's like the amount of time it would take to, you know, complete the project, so to speak?
The installation is actually scheduled in two phases. And that is, the first phase is really a chance to sort of stand up the collectors in the field to do the data programming that needs to be done to get data from our system into the A M I system and then perfect that data coming back into our system so we can capture all the meter swap activity. And some of that has to be contracted both with Eaton and with our, um, U B C I S contract, um, vendor. So it's probably going to take that six months to do a lot of that setup. Phase one, which is going to be start this year, late twenty-four, allows us to prove the, the functionality of the system. Once that has been accomplished in the defined area, phase two, that'll be the rollout. We'll start wrapping that up and that'll probably continue, uh, late twenty-four into twenty-five. So that's why we've budgeted the installation over two budget cycles.
Got it. And then the other question I have is that for, um, for the electric, right? Cause there's a lot of like, uh, electric has become more complexes. Now we have like, you know, people have like wired smart homes, people have like, you know, like network connectivity, E Vs, things like that. So I think there's a lot of people who are much more interested, especially for E V owners, like, you know, what's consumption? How much did I use? Does it match when my vehicle's telling me, you know, things like that, you know? And what type of capabilities that provide for like residents?
Yeah, that's, and that's part of the customer portal. So, um, there's a lot of configure, configure ability in the meter. So if you had an E V, for instance, right? Um, right now, the default is I'm going to have, uh, hourly interval data transmitted every four hours. That's just the default. We actually go down to one minute or even five-minute intervals every fifteen minutes. You can go and dial that without adding more infrastructure. So the, the nice part of that is right, it can grow and, and, and change and evolve without having to go visit the meter either. So again, as you have an E V, we can have shorter intervals. So you can look at your customer portal app. You can see that refresh happening and matching that up with your charge time, matching that up with, hey, I set my Tesla and I can see that demand or I can see that change. Um, but you want to be very careful too, right? It's not always showing, say, um, dollar amount or things like that. It's going to show you usage and, and that will be done, working out how to translate that over. That's just some education that happens, uh, because there's other fees, right? It's never a straight bill, right? And we want to be careful with that. Um, but the point of maybe to getting to your question here, right? Is that you can see a lot of that information and share it with your own. You can also provide that with, um, other caregivers, right? There's other pieces here that you can share with only those that you would like to. And everyone else doesn't see that, right? Everything's segmented, everything's encrypted too. So there's security, there's a cybersecurity list within that as well, that Eaton is very conscious about too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One thing I do want to point out, uh, Kristoff, we, he put, uh, a dent or, there was an addendum onto the staff report that talked about from a legal perspective, you know, that this is a very different bidding process than a typical bidding process. And so he did a good job of sort of outlining, um, why we can take the lowest responsible bid. Because again, this isn't the cheapest product. The cheapest product, if we took that, wouldn't meet any of our needs that we need. You know, it's cheaper for a reason, um, but it's also not the most expensive product either. So it's, it's, uh, it's the one that, uh, best meets our needs for the, for the community. And, uh, you know, that we're not materially changing from it. We just wanted to make sure that, uh, legal had a opportunity to, to, you know, inform me about that because it's very different than most bidding processes we go through.
I, and I'm glad that we looked at it as responsible bid because too many places take the little bit because they think they have to and not look in.
Well, this is a little different. I mean.
Right. It's got to still meet our needs.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I get it. But that's what I'm saying is I'm glad that we just didn't say, oh, we're going to take the little bed. Kind of been through that a little bit, you know, in a way, I don't, you know, so, uh, but I, and I would have a question is, um, now Matt, you had said, Payton or Matt?
Yep, no, that's all right.
Uh, you had said that all it has to be changed for the water side is the controller outside. Uh, there's no inside and no water disruption.
Uh, some homes have the, the module inside and we'll have to make an entry to swap those out, but the meter is not getting changed out. It's just, it's three wires that get hooked up.
And so Pete, now all the meters physically have to be changed.
Correct.
And that means a power off.
Correct.
How?
Uh, a lot of them will have a bypass lever handle on the meter socket so they can bypass it. Pull the meter out, the power will still flow through while you change that meter out. So no power.
Power. So I would just.
Not like five minutes of free power. Fifty seconds.
So they, they, there's a lever that they have built in the box?
There's a lever bypass on the meter sockets.
Oh, okay. Cause that's what I, I, so there's, there won't be any interruption then? Cause that's what I worry about is there's so much electronics now and if something gets shut off and then it doesn't reboot right and something happens.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the things, cause, and I'll finish and I'll let you go, is that we have tried every way possible about communication to try to communicate with people to how do we tell them that this is happening? And I don't care. It'll be the first five days, we'll have somebody say, I didn't know. And, and I get it. We don't always look at every correspondence, but how are we going to let people know that this is happening and it's for real? And make sure you check things and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Great. And, and understood because there's a lot of, there's a lot of people working from home now. Um, the internet has, has provided that, uh, uh, ability to. So there's, there's not as if we're going to walk into somebody's backyard and just pull their meter out. As part of the bid, it is to knock on doors and physically talk to somebody. If they don't, depending on the procedure, right? We may proceed to say, oh, well, no, well, it's when we're going to change your, your meter out, uh, and, and leave a door hanger, leave a, um, a correspondence that says, hey, I was here. I changed your meter. That's why your microwave, I went, I'd save V C R, but we don't have V C Rs anymore. So you have to change your microwave now and reset that clock. Um, for those that are home, if they, they refuse to, they actually, then the installer will come back. They'll schedule the time when it is more convenient for them. So that's one layer. There's also some phone calls that happen. There is also a local number that they will have that your customers can call to set up a, uh, installation appointment for them. Uh, so there's a number, again, there's a number of layers beyond just, um, putting on your website, sending out a mailer, sending out kind of those typical text messages and, and some of those things. So there are some marketing things that we're going to have to do as a team, but there's also, again, that installation crew is going to be handling becoming that, that field portion of it for you too.
I have a follow-up question to this one too. Um, so like, how do we handle or how do we make sure that people know that this is a legitimate thing they're doing? Because so many people are, there's like scams going around. It says, oh, I'm a utility company. Come and let me in your house and I'll take, you know, or whatever, or you need to write me a check for something, right? You know, there's all those scams around there, you know, and there's people, so some people like, you know, like my mom would be one of those people who were like, no, no, I'm not going to talk to anybody. They're trying to sell me something or try to take my money, right? So, you know, how do we also make sure that legitimately people know that this is real and not some scam?
Yeah.
Right?
Uh, great question, right? Beyond just having the installation group have a co-branded sticker or co-branded on their truck. It's going to be City of Chaska Authorized Contractor Allegiant. Uh, the, the installer's name, it was Legion. Um, they also have name tags and name bags with their picture on it. On the other side, they have contact information and that'll be for the city too. So that's again, another kind of component. The installation, uh, application that they have and provide has real-time location for the installers as well. And so we have coordinated where, hey, I'm going to be in this neighborhood. I'm actually installing these fifty meters today as an installer. This is the street that I'm going to be working on. Here's the live view of where I am. And if they're not moving and they're somewhere else, either they're at lunch or they're done for the day. So thing. Um, I'd have to look, so this is where I'd have to give some follow-up for you. But I do believe there's an opportunity to have, I'll call it like a, uh, safe word, right? A, hey, I called City of Chaska and this is the password. And then they would say it's right, you can exchange that type of, um, if it needed to get that. Now, was that part of the bid that was not? That can be a service that's offered, but it's not part of this, this process. So you're right. We, we try to be very careful to say, look, we are dressed the way we need to be dressed. We are very visible. Um, it isn't as if street clothes are coming up knocking on your mother's door, say, let me inside. Uh, kind of thing, absolutely.
And those communications, they'll also be in other languages? Or do you have resources to make that happen? Cause.
Yes. Yes. And on the customer portal, uh, you'll have to remind me, but I believe actually you can set those in, uh, other languages too. So it's not just English. I, there was a whole list. Yes. Great questions. Keep them coming.
Well, I, I mean, going back, I, what I worry about is when you knock on the door and there's no one home
Mm-hmm.
and there happens to be an interruption. That's, you know, the, I, I don't know how you take care of that.
Yeah, no, it's difficult. I, I, I guess I would say, and no detriment to Pete here, but we also don't warn people when, when there's an outage, right? When, when there's a power outage, we're not telling anybody either. And so we, we can't always predict that. So I, I realize this is a predictable outage, but not one that necessarily would change the dynamics if we had say a power outage right now. So it's one that I get it. We just have to kind of manage expectations sometimes.
Well, I, like I said, I just want to make sure that we've thought about everything that, you know.
Understood. Yep. And there's, and there's, uh, maybe if it's helpful, and that doesn't exactly address some of your concerns, but they do take pictures before they install anything, while they're installing it, and then after they're done, so they can show you how they arrived, what the location looked like and how they left that location as well. Cause right to most probably your point, you're the last one that touched the electric meter. So if anything goes wrong, you probably get blamed for it, even if it was your fault or not. Um, that's just sometimes the nature of it too. And that's part of why we have pictures and a process to go through for that installation, um, to, to help at least educate and understand that we weren't there running. To, to help at least educate and understand that we weren't there running through somebody's backyard, trampling their prized rose bushes. We really were trying to take care as we were just. Exchanging the meter, minimal, minimally invasive is what we're looking to do.
So would there be like, uh, a team of, uh. Four guys? I don't know. Four installers also. Uh, are they going to stay in? A certain area or is one going to be down here? One's going to be up there. One's going to be down there. Are they going to go in? And go like for us by neighborhood by neighborhood and try to do, so everybody's done at the same time in the same proximity versus. One group down here and one group down there.
Yeah. The, the good news on that too, is that you actually have the flexibility to dictate how that exchange happens. And the nice thing too, is their crew has the ability to exchange electric and water at the same time. So if they don't have to go inside and that module that's mounted on the side of the house can be exchanged. They'll do the electric meter and the water module at the exact same time. That's one visit. That's, that's efficiency. Um, so that's, that's a really good thing. Uh, the other one is you have billing that's going on with your other system too. So they will roll this out based on a number of factors. That could be meeting cycles. That could be where we are in the billing cycle too. That could be geographically, that could be by subdivision. We get to dictate how that is. In the end, we're going to look at the most efficient way to exchange those. Um, in, in the right amount, because you don't necessarily want them scattered. Um, but you may find that somebody's working north and someone's working south and you have those two texts. What we do know though is geographically where they will be, uh, because as a city, what we do is we upload the list of meters that they will be working on for that week. It's not all of them all at once. So again, we, we have some, I'll call it leeway here, um, and, and some authority to do that.
Matt, to say, I, I, unless there's some other beneficial way to, that to be scattered. I think it's nice to stay in one area and get it done. And then the neighbors are talking, then there's somebody, well, nobody came, nobody did anything at our house. It's, uh, it's, I don't know, from my thinking, I think it's better to go in and do all of the neighborhood and then go to the next one. Whether you go downtown then versus up there, I, I, I think if you're doing an area, try to do that area all at the same time.
Yeah. In fa- in phase one, uh, what we're talking about, what, what Noel was talking about, about getting, getting, uh, this, the, the billing system and everything integrated. We've kind of targeted kind of that, uh, east side of Autobahn and, uh, down in Sandy Acres, kind of that little pocket of town to start there. And so we'll be focusing there. And then, um, as we, as we move forward, uh, a, a lot of the, the exterior water modules. Are on homes that were probably around 2,000 and newer. And so, um, those will be relatively quick, uh, for the installer, for both the electric and the water to get done. There are situations, even in new homes where, uh, a plumber had run a wire outside and then they go to, uh, do some framing or put up some sheet rock. And they put a screw through the wire and then it's shot. And then, so that module is in the home, even in a newer home, that happens. Um, and in, in those situations, the installer will, will try to make contact. And if we don't, if, if they don't get contact, some of those will get turned back to us where we'll have to, um, intervene and go and swap those out. And, um, and we're, we, we, we did it, uh, a number of years ago and we'll, we're ready to do that again if necessary. But, um, I think, uh, as, as Kyle was saying, uh, the billing side of it is going to be important too. Because, um, the way we currently do some of our manual reads and things are by geographic areas, how we break those down. That's where our guys are out and, um, and then as, as Kyle said, one thing that was, was really intriguing about the, uh, the installer. Uh, because that was a big deal the last time we did this and not in a real positive light either. Um, there, they wanted, they talked about having a dual magnets on their trucks that are, or vehicles that are all the same. So they, they look the exact same and they have a City of Chaska emblem on there and then their, their logo on there as well. And so, um, hopefully i- i- and that didn't, that wasn't the case, uh, a decade ago when we did, uh, did the last deployment. So, um. So yeah, it's from a geographic location. I, I don't disagree with you because from our staff standpoint, if we have to go out and do manual reads. On the, uh, the, the other system, it would be nice to have them focused on one area versus bouncing all over town, getting two reads in over here. And then running up to Bavaria Hills and.
And I was going to say, you know, I get it about focusing on the ones that you've had all the problems with, but I also know that they're all over. So there is no one particular area that has the issue. It's like all, all across the city. So there's really not.
Twenty's thirty, twenty to thirty percent?
We're 25%.
Yeah. So I mean, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
So and then one thing we have to be conscious of too, with that legacy system is when one electric meter goes. There could be some water nodes that are coming in from that other that are going to be, they're shut off then. And then, then we have to address those. So we have to be conscious of that too. So.
Yeah. So when we can, when we canvass those areas, it'll be beneficial to be teaming up on them. Do water and electric at the same time. Cause once you pull one, you, you cannibalize the other one.
Well, that, that's the main thing that we, you know, we're thinking about all the, you know, and making sure that doing the best that we can possibly do. Thinking about all the big questions that are out there.
We learned some tough lessons on the last one and we don't want to go through those again.
Any other questions?
Just kind of excited for the application app on the phone. Do you think more and more people demand to know what's happening? And there's a thirst for that knowledge. Um, some people just pay the bill or write the check. Life's good. But people want to watch the meter on their, you know, as you said, as a move. So I think, you know, you look at a continuing, growing city, I think there's more and more demand for that up to the minute, up to the hour, kind of what's happening in my house. Um, approach. So I'm glad to see that that's an applicator, a part of this process and we'll meet that standard.
Absolutely.
I think people see that as a benefit.
Uh, and it reminds me too, just as I know we're wrapping up here, is outage and restoration, we didn't mention it. It's absolutely included too. So you'll know outages and more importantly, restoration. So we don't miss anybody. Um, when, when power's out, we can send messages through the customer portal as well, some alerts on the, the main page. So, um, again, more information, some more details. People want to know what's going on.
And some of this, we're going to want to train our residents on how to use this because, I mean. How many phone calls when a power outage come all at once? I mean, a lot. And, you know, if we can train people to say, hey, here's an app. And if something happens to the power outage, we can put a message out like almost immediately and give you up to date stuff that we can. Update on a regular basis and let you know when it's restored, then, you know, then it makes everybody's use of their time more efficient.
So on that note, just a super quick question. Is this, is that also available on like a mobile web app? Oh, it's a website rather than an app, because I know some people are like, gosh, I got like a hundred apps on my phone. I don't need like another one, right?
Sounds, sounds like me. I'm done downloading it. Absolutely. It's, um, yes, it's brow- I'll call it browser agnostic. It's, um, device agnostic. So it will auto, yeah, it detects on what, what you're looking at. It sometimes gets scrunched, but, but you absolutely can pull it up on a browser on any.
So it makes these browser based instead of, it's not like an app you have to install.
Wow. Seems like we're. Getting everything that we need.
You guys are the experts. You're helping to be experts.
These guys are chapping at the bit to be able to get going.
So what did you say over there? Late, probably late this year, we could start.
You know, there's, like we said, there's the lead time for actually getting meters delivered and that's going to be at least 26 to 30 weeks. We're hearing right now in the market. Um, that was a consideration in selecting Eaton that they had probably a shorter delivery time. And then just getting services scheduled for the implementation, because this is a big project to do the programming and the data interface. So I would anticipate we'll be into that phase one testing late this year. And hopefully then, but towards the end of this year, ramping up into 2025 for the full deployment.
And I assume now we'll have, uh, Kevin and Chris to start getting stuff on, on the media sites. And I assume you guys have made, uh, some sort of a draft letter for him to use there explaining all the technical side of what, what's happening and what's.
It's not going to go up tomorrow, but it will be going up as, no, I, as when it's ready.
Yeah. And those are major tools. We didn't have a decade ago too, which are going to be, they're going to be a tremendous asset.
Also know, you can't put it out too early either.
Exactly.
Yeah. You gotta find that, hopefully you gotta find that mix of. Do, do some now and then just kind of keep doing them as we go, as we move forward and we get closer to the date. So. And we can start hitting the gear. It's got to be kind of remembered, reminded of it, I guess. So.
I do want to take this opportunity to thank the staffs of all three of their departments. I mean, when they're saying there's 25% of our meters that they're having to manually read each month and manually enter into the system. That's, that's a lot of manpower that's going into, uh, uh, into dealing with this issue. And so, um, you know, anywhere from utility billing, having to manually enter to the crews that, that Pete and Matt send out. That have to go and physically read at a, at a home. It, they've done a, a lot of work for that. So, um, that, just a big thank you to them.
Well, it sounds like not only you guys will be excited, so will staffs. They don't have to go out and do all that. I, I've already heard grumbling about that. Yeah, we're working on it. So. Cool. Exciting. Well, it seems like you guys have done a lot, awful lot of work to come up with a system that everyone seems to be nodding in the same direction. So that's pretty cool. So thank you all for that. And I don't know, are we done here or we got more to go?
No, we just need to accept the bids.
Now.
Accept the bid.
If we accept the bids, you guys sign a contract you can order, right? Not, is that all that?
With the motion, there, there's a resolution to accept the bid and then there's language in there that says it's, this is being awarded conditional. On completion of an agreement and a statement of work. And your author, once that's complete, then the mayor and the city administrator are being authorized to execute those documents. So the next step in this process is for us to sit down with Eaton and they made, they took some exceptions to what we asked for. We have to basically sit down with them and come to an agreement in final form before we can go forward.
Uh, the price should stay pretty, pretty close to the same, but.
Price has to stay the same.
That's what I was wanting to use your, take an exception to things that usually change.
Yeah, that's one of the things that, you know, we have, can do the best value, uh, pricing. But if things change, we, uh, in order to stay consistent with the bid law, we can't have a different price.
That's what I want to make sure I didn't want to, you got that and then all of a sudden, oh yeah, we made a bunch of changes and it's another order. You know, so.
All right. Anyone else? Final questions?
I think they've answered most of the questions for us. So.
All right.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2024 dash four awarding bid for Chaska advanced metering infrastructure.
A second.
Okay. So a, a motion by council member Hatfield, second by council member Wong. And I'm going to read this out of the staff report. It says, adopt resolution 2024 awarding the bid. For an advanced metering infrastructure system at Eaton in the amount of, uh, five point, I would say five point three. Then contingent upon the completion of agreement and statement of work. Uh, for the AMI project. That's all right. Okay. Right. And your emotions are still good with what I read versus what you did? You're good? All right. Discussion. During none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Nice and carries. Thanks, guys. Thank you for being here. All right.
Pete, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Oh, wow.
Evil.
Drive safe.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Did they need any paper sign for? Okay. All right, uh, we move on to, that's our last action item. So we move on to bills. Anyone have a question on the bill?
I do. Um, so I have four questions. Uh, page four, um, this is an item for state Minnesota Department of Public Safety. This was some traffic control items. Um, was, were those traffic control items for the traffic control coming into downtown? Uh, were those are for the, um, for the state troopers to monitor? So the question is, I recall that there were some challenges with managing traffic from, from this. Um, if we had to do this all over again, what we've done differently?
It depends on what your objectives are. If our obje- if our objective was to keep, uh, traffic coming into, to downtown to support the businesses. Then what we did was absolutely what we should have done. Um, there was no way that we were going to be able to stop every semi, uh, that came into, to downtown. One of the most, just anecdotally, one of the more interesting ones, and although we share it because it's her story. But she has a friend that's a state trooper that actually did one of the, the, uh, routes down there. So let you talk about it.
Yeah, I happen to see her name on there. And so I reached out to her to find out how her shift went. And, um, she said she turned around a lot of trucks. I mean, I think, you know, because it was south, we didn't see a lot of that, but she just anecdotally. Um, she understood why, you know, she drove it. She understood why we needed to do that because it was so difficult. But yeah, she said there were just a ton of trucks and had they not been there, those trucks would have been. Um, attempting, attempting to, I mean, that's the best way to put it, attempting to make that turn.
I'm sure they're always in a super pleasant mood when they're asked not to go that direction.
Yeah. The only thing we talked about that, you know, looking back that may we would have done different is to maybe start an hour earlier in the day. Um, because that's probably when we had the most issues, uh, that popped up.
Time where they starting at?
They started at seven AM, but there was frequently times when I would come in that a staff member said that they got stuck behind a truck. Who had gotten there before the state trooper had. That was true.
So it, and, and again, I mean, trucks actually come in through the night. So I mean.
Stop it all. Yeah. Sneaking downstairs in the middle of the night.
Yeah. But no, I think if our goal was to try to keep as much traffic coming in downtown, I, I think they did as good a job as you could do.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Was that, did we have that as part of the process or did we, is that an add on that we had to add?
We had that as part of the process when we started, didn't we? No, added on.
Added on when we started to understand the difficulties after.
Oh, yeah. You're right. Yep.
So that was our expense. We couldn't share that with anyone that, uh.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So on page six, there's an item for Chaska Commons, um, improvements in, looks at compensation. What is that for?
That is actually for the property, um, I'll give you the address here, two 10 Chestnut Street. Uh, so this is that building that had the stairway, uh, in between the two buildings get raised up there. So as the stairway came down, it actually, uh, blocked off one of the doors that, um, wasn't being used in the past. But as the tenant moved out, they were actually looking at trying to utilize that, that door. So it was really compensation for loss of access into the, into the building.
So how come this is, this Chaska Commons? Cause that's.
That's the name of the group that owns the building.
Also, the name of a group happens also to be no Chaska. So there's no relation to Chaska Commons since that's, okay.
Yeah. Signing documents. I go, Chaska Commons? Why are we doing out there?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. So that's, that's what this probably throwing me off is the name of that. Um, so page 10, there's an item for Eureka Construction, um, it's Creek Road Utility. Um, but it kind of brings up the question of like, how are the, how's that work progressing? And, you know, when do we think that that will, you know, when were those two questions? When do we think we're going to finish that part of the utilities? And the other side is like, when will the creek trail actually be open?
So the, the project was actually going very smooth. Um, it'll, it'll end now. Um, you know, with the temperatures coming up, uh, and, and winter finally here. I, I actually saw for the first time ever geese flying south in January yesterday. So they must know what's coming. But the, yeah, but the, uh, uh. The, the issue that they ran into what, uh, that actually made them stop a little bit earlier, uh, was that there's lead time on manholes. And so, um, so, you know, our projects that we've been doing, a lot of things have been impacted by lead times. On, on sort of standard products and stuff. But, uh, they'll, uh, once the weather warms up, they'll be able to start up and we would expect the project and that trail to open up. Uh, probably in that August timeframe.
And so then this connects to that sewer coming from above the north side of Creek Road all the way through down to, um, uh, was it Stanaway?
Uh, no, it comes, it comes all the way down Creek Road to connect into our sewer that's already down at the end of. Uh, no, it comes, it comes all the way down Creek Road to connect into our sewer that's already down at the end of Creek Road. What it does is it shoots up and then it uh connects into Razors' property, uh which is on the west side of the freeway.
Okay, okay.
So uh, I thought when we bid that, that was a project that they could work on all winter. That, I mean, so they are gonna stop.
They are gonna stop.
Oh, I I took it.
So again, part of it is, is that they, some of the supplies they can't get either.
I got that part of it.
Yeah.
And the last question I have here is there's an item for KTJ three seven six LLC, which is a very odd name for an organization. Um, and it shows her pay-go note, so it's like very cryptic in terms of what it is, what it's for.
It's for one of the Appiden buildings, so we provided uh, so when we provide our tax increment now, we don't provide it as upfront assistance. We provide it as a pay pay-go note.
Okay.
Uh, so that they only receive the assistance once they've actually generated it. Um, it helps protect us to uh make sure that, you know, when we when you make it upfront, you're taking a little bit of risk about what that's gonna be in the future. So but but it's one of the Appiden buildings up there.
Got it. So that's just they have whatever reason they named their org that.
That that was their LLC they named it.
Gotcha.
So there uh, so that one up closest now is full, I think.
Yep, yeah, they have two businesses in there and then they have a lumacraft and the.
Or there's a tenant down on the west side. I don't know how much they take, uh, but that's, I don't know, I think that's looked like the only thing in there, but I don't know, it's hard to tell. Without going up to the door, but. So.
Hey, and then the only uh comment I had was that, um, you know, I noticed that there's a lot of um a lot of the comments had like loop gutters, loop cabinets, you know, finishing utilities, and that was like super, super helpful to like associate those. So I just wanted to just, you know, mention that because when I was looking through that, I saved a lot of like, okay, I wonder what this is for sort of questions.
Were they, I without looking, now, I assume that's because the contract was actually written as different.
Yeah, there were all sorts of different different vendors and.
The contracts aren't always written that way, so they're not always entered into the system that way, so.
This one was kind of nice because I was looking through that. I mean, there's probably at least probably twenty, thirty of them, there was started with loop something and so it was like, okay, there's only one loop thing that's going on. And so it's pretty obvious, like loop finishing materials, loop this, and so just looking through, there's a lot of those. I made it really easy to spot, so just wanted to, you know, thank whoever did that for doing that because that made life a lot easier and a lot more self-explanatory. Yep, that's all I got.
Yeah, anyone else? Motion paid bills.
So moved.
Motion by customer one.
Second.
Second by customer Hubbard, discussion. Elise?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard?
Yes.
I.
Yes.
Yes. All right, uh, moves us to other business. Uh, so customer raw.
Uh, I don't really have much. It's been crazy holiday into the new year. But I do want to just connect to appreciate the email from staff regarding Minnesota Ernst and Save Time and who worked the HR group put together to implement that because uh.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal. I know that for a fact for my day job of the implications of how that is and you know, a lot of times laws get passed and that's the easy part, truthfully, to get the potentially get the pass law, the hard work is how to actually get it implemented. I do think, you know, we'll continue to see how um there may be changes over time to that. I think, you know, as we've looked, I've looked at it, my career and profession. There's some very loosely worded language about what a family member is and what a family member is not, so.
And what you're able to ask and what you're not able to ask.
Correct. So yeah, I just, again, I I know that um I wanna shout out our human resources department for the city because that is something that you gotta get right and you gotta expect that people will have lots of questions. I'm sure they still have. Um, but it is not something that just happens magically when a law gets passed uh by any means. So just wanted to say that. Other than that, I'm good for tonight.
And and off of that, there was some transitioning there because we had some turnover in HR, so we had some.
Yes, they're doing all that while transitioning.
Yeah, so that's a lot of work for somebody new just coming into the role here, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations to those guys, so. Thank you.
I'm good. All right, councilor one?
Um, a few things. At first, Happy New Year, um, welcome to twenty twenty four. Um, the Santa parade that would happen in the the tail end actually happened after our last meeting, so that was a really cool to see Santa driving the skid loader around and to, you know, see the parade and even the Grinch too, so that was really cool. Uh, everybody, I know my son enjoyed it.
Buddy, I forget buddy.
Buddy, buddy, too. And Buddy was there as well. Yes, can't forget Buddy. Um, and so then um the MLK Human Rights Award um is on January fifteenth, Chaska Event Center for eight to nine AM. Uh, the fireman's ice fishing contest will be indoors because it's not enough ice.
Be all indoors.
Is it? Or just?
They're just won't be on the ice.
Yeah, it is. Well, it definitely won't be on the ice for sure.
Yeah.
So but it's uh, but it'll still be happening on Saturday, February third at the Chaska Event Center.
The last time when they had that, they had like campfires outside where people could roast marshmallows.
Yeah, I think they're 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 coming up with stuff.
Last year we had ice on on there. It's been several years that we have not hit the ice on the water.
I'll tell you what, to me, I think back over the last twenty years, I think, I feel like there's been more times we haven't had it than we've had it. So it's.
I think the whole even before we always have.
Yeah.
I just, so something I guess is changing. But then part of it tells me maybe back then we did look real close, so while the ice was or wasn't. And thank goodness, nothing ever happened.
For sure. Yep, um, also this uh, I um also note that tomorrow in Shakopee, there'll be a Metropolitan Council Governance Task Forces of having a public hearing. So um I'll be attending that on behalf of Suburban Transit Association. Um, and then um and let's see, and also just as a note for Southwest Transit, ridership numbers came out and so ridership had overall from Southwest Transit from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty two had a nineteen point seven percent increase, so almost twenty percent increase overall. Um, the biggest one, all of our services expand or had a growth, uh, express grew fifteen percent um from the previous year. Uh, special events, that's like, you know, the state fair or like Arboretum and, you know, these special events like that. And also like, you know, um, bringing people to special events like uh the football playoffs, for example, right? Um, that increased seventeen point six percent. Um, the biggest gain was prime, which is the, you know, the the public version of Uber or Lyft, right? And that point-to-point service went up twenty seven point nine percent this past year. Um, so now there's some funding that was passed on last year's legislative bills or legislative um uh packet that will provide additional funding, so we're still trying to figure out how much funding that, you know, will come back to Southwest Transit. Um, so hopefully that will allow for expansion of those services, so we'll be able to do more prime services within our community since clearly it's a growing service with a growing need. Um, and that will help more people within our community, so wanted to put that out there. Um, there's a lot of growth and good stuff happening. Um, and but the 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 good news, bad news is that on the express side, we're still, you know, around like what thirty percent of pre-pandemic levels. So even though we had like a hundred ninety seven thousand rides, you know, it's still like, you know, it's still like pales and impersons compared to what we used to do in the past. But the good news is Prime's picking up, so things have shifted around a little bit, so we're able to focus our attention there now, so.
I think the prime that Southwest Transit has set up has really blossomed into metro transit. I think they're seeing the benefits of that and they're starting to do that now and I think SDA has been doing it, but uh so it's interesting that, you know, it's kind of flip-flop, they're them following us on something like that. Uh, question on that governance meeting tomorrow. I I was gonna go, but I can't now. Is there?
Wait, I'm going. He's going.
Oh, you're gonna go? Perfect. All right, as long as somebody's representing the city and I know that.
Yeah, that's right. We decided that and.
Because I wasn't, yeah, I was a meeting. That was.
You weren't there, were you?
So I'm good because.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I was supposed to have a procedure last Tuesday and I got moved to tomorrow, so I would not be. I'm good. Great job.
Specifically.
Great job. Perfect.
So.
You're good?
Yep, so we're good. Yeah, I was gonna thank my colleague for joining me too, so tomorrow.
That's right. You're wearing two hats there. Make sure you're representing the city there, not that.
History of the Met Council, going back to nineteen seventy four.
Four score and seven.
I have no report. It's been sent.
Good report. Thank you. You're up.
All right, um, after the last council meeting, I noticed something hanging in the hallway and I just thought um, I don't think we recognized the Human Rights Commission for um getting an award called Leaders in the Arena from Unidos, Minnesota. Is that how you say it? Is that right? So I just want to recognize them. They do a lot of hard work, as all of our commissions do. Um, and I thought that was nice that they were able to get that award for the work that they do um in our community. Uh, I want to recognize that, especially with the MLK Breakfast coming up. Um, other things, uh, tomorrow is Coffee with a Cop at the Targets Starbucks.
Yep.
At nine AM and then January seventeenth at Red Bench. Those are always nice.
Um, tomorrow, tomorrow is a special, isn't that uh?
Appreciation Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why there's two of them.
Thanks, Chris.
That's why you come to meetings.
I forgot to bring cookies, sorry.
Sorry.
That's good. And then January eighteenth is the food distribution at noon at Gdenny. Um, Citizens Academy, I don't know if there's still spots open, but that's coming up January eighteenth and there are spots open, highly recommend. Um, and then just anecdotally, I was uh, I can't remember driving home from Target or something and I noticed the signage for the loop was up. I just thought that was really exciting to see some signage and like signage out on um Pioneer, pointing in that direction and just very excited for that to open.
Yeah, a little marketing.
Yeah, we have our uh uh position open for, I think, maybe another week or so for the, with the nine-month uh clubhouse manager. Uh, so yeah, it's it's gonna come sooner than what you think.
Yeah.
The outside anyways, looking really nice.
Yeah, it does. And uh, the other thing people don't see that is an absolute huge improvement is the maintenance building.
Building, they never had nothing.
They never really had it. They didn't even have a bathroom back there. And so, I mean, the maintenance building actually has the space that they need to be able to maintain that now and it really that that turned out nice. And it's just, it's a simple building, but it's really nice.
Very exciting. So those are all the things I have.
All right, Elise, have you?
Uh, just on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, inviting you all to the MLK Breakfast. We have a lot of Chaska High School students participating this year in lieu of um, you know, formal guest speaker coming in from outside, so it's gonna be a great event.
Do you, do you do the notices that we would be more than three at an event like that? And possibly the Boy Scout event? That we should make sure that we're covering ourselves perfect. Thank you. All right, Nate, any?
Yes, I want to give you an update on some of the work we'll be doing, bringing forward to you all uh through the planning commission over the course of this year. So I think you might have saw in Matt's uh bi-weekly, there won't be any planning items coming forward in January. Um, that's because there weren't any planning applications for the month to consider, so that's a little bit unique on the course of the last few years. Um, but we are working on implementation of recommendations that came out of the zoning audit. I think hopefully you all remember going through that last year. Um, and out of that, you might recall, we applied for a grant through the Met Council. We were successful in getting that fifty thousand dollars um to go towards paying for um work that that we're working with our consultant group on um HKGI, Jeff Miller, uh, who did the audit to go forward in some implementation there. So what you will see, we're kind of breaking this up in a couple of different ways. Things that, you know, broadly defined, um, things that we need to do to align those state statute. Uh, so we don't really have a lot of discretion over and then things that are more policy-driven. And you know, reflection direction that we want to take the city, uh, so we have a lot of discretion over that. And so right now, those first couple of things that you'll see coming in February are those more alignment with statute type of issues. Uh, one of them is uh language that needs to change in our variance uh ordinance and another is language that needs to change in our non-conforming, non-conformities ordinance. Specifically on the variances, it's alignment with state statute. Um, there was some changes that occurred about twelve, thirteen years ago that shifted from undue hardship to practical difficulties. And that has some um, some differences in how we evaluate uh variance request as a result of that. Now, the way that we ve- that we currently evaluate a variance request is in line with state statute. Our ordinance is not, right? So i- it's not gonna change practice, but it'll change the accuracy of our ordinance up to that. So that'll come forward in February and you'll see those things. We're also looking at our shoreline ordinance, uh, and that's another alignment with state statute item. Um, where that has, the DNR has a model ordinance that that they put out um that cities should align with. Um, ours is aged to a level where uh we're not, we're not probably as aligned as we should be, and so we're working on that. And that's Liz uh really teaming up with Kristoff on those items when we're looking at that alignment issue. Other topics that include things like special regulations, subdivision regulations and our planned development district sections of our code, those are more discretionary and those are areas that are more reflective of, you know, our desires and how we want to see development occur. Uh, so those are items that we'll be working through the processes. We go through the calendar year. Uh, we'll be working with Jeff to put a calendar together, so that's understood a little bit better and hopefully come February, we'll have some of those details better understood to share with you all. But we do anticipate having joint work sessions with planning commission and councils. We kind of go through step through, step by step through those items and work through that process. So for now, I just want to give you that heads up so you understand this is coming, you're aware, um, we're working on it. Um, and I think come February, as we're bringing those first couple ordinances forward, our goal would be to have a little bit more uh definition around timelines and some of that stuff, so.
It's a big project and I think that, you know, I don't know, we've sort of looked in the past at using those times that might be slower in development to to be able to plan for the future. And I think that's really what we're trying to do here too is to say, okay, we may not be having as many planning applications come in, but let's use this time to really prepare for the future. Um, and so, um, just sort of a- as I looked at the stuff that Hoysing to put together, to me, it sort of felt like right around December, we'd probably be getting done uh with the process so that we'd have this all, you know, spend just this whole year and really try to focus on going into two thousand twenty-five with having that whole process completed.
That's all I got.
Right. Kristoff?
I do actually have a couple of, oh, I, yeah, I have a couple of things. So the first, first thing I wanted to say was thank you, Santa, for coming to um coming to visit Chaska. Um, I did bring my little one to to see Santa and she was very happy that he waved at her. Um, so that was, that was very nice. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention, where we were talking about new laws coming into effect. Uh, we talked about the Ernst and Save Time, um, that that's been a big change. Um, the other law that may 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 not have attention on it right now, Minnesota now has, it's commonly described as a red flag law. Um, which is now in effect as of January first and understand the Chief Police Association is developing some model policies, but something that I'm definitely going to be keeping an eye on, moving forward to see how that um winds up being.
There's some real challenges with this one. Uh, with some of the requirements uh uh that were put in this law that basically says that, you know, s- you know, somebody could have somebody's weapons taken away, basically if, you know, there was concern. The state statute puts cities as being responsible for uh compensating the people who are giving up their weapons for the fair market value of that, of that weapon.
Isn't this a temporary thing? It's not forever, is it?
It can be forever. It can be.
Person can voluntarily relinquish their um their rights to those and then they're entitled to some kind of compensation from the.
And the cities have to do it?
Yes.
What about the county areas?
Or if the county is the.
So yeah.
Enforcing.
No, no, it's whoever is actually receiving that firearm. And so.
Or if it's a federally licensed firearms dealer that could pay, you know, pay them that um market value or.
It's it's one that I think what you're gonna see is like with a lot of laws that go through too quickly. Um, you're gonna see this year, people coming through and trying to to make changes to, I mean, just take away the ridiculousness of some of the uh of the law. I mean, the concept is not a bad concept, but it should not be the public's, all of us's responsibility to pay for that. So, yeah, so it's it it's uh i- it's just something that people didn't think through the details of it too well.
Well, it seems like we've had a lot of bills come up that one year.
Well, when you do a lot of stuff, you, you know. Well, when you do a lot of stuff, you, you, yeah. So that I, I expect the Chiefs of Police Association is gonna have, you know, there's gonna be that one and there's also gonna be the, the School Resource Officer language that needs to get permanently fixed as well.
Alright, anything else? Thank you.
Uh only thing I want to uh announce is uh I really appreciate everybody getting back to me today on the retreat date. Uh so we're able to get it for March twenty first and twenty second date. So uh it's just pushes it just one week back farther. I will send out an email to everybody just to uh to confirm that, but uh the most important thing is that all works for you. We'll get it to work with uh with our schedule. But.
Friday.
It's a Thursday, Friday.
I appreciate your flexibility.
I wasn't gonna.
It's fine. I do plan some things in advance and something got planned that I have no control over on that one. Well, limited control.
That's all I have.
Uh I just have, one, I, I have a couple of questions. I got a phone call about panhandlers. And I, I think I know the answer, but I'm asking it. So I really know the answer. Is because uh the caller just said, can't we just ask them to leave? And I said, I don't think so.
Well, we can ask them to leave. We can't require them to leave. The only way that you can require uh someone to leave is if they're on private property and that private property owner asks them to be tres- trespass. Um the way our police department handles uh calls with panhandlers is that they go up and treat it more as a welfare call. Um to go up and make sure like if it's like extremely hot or if it's extremely cold or if there's children that are there, those types of things to go up and, you know, we have, you know, vouchers that we can provide for a hotel or, you know, we treat it more as a service call. But we can't require them to leave public property.
That's why, that's how they can stand in the median, because that is public.
Well, technically, I mean, I, I've seen where this particular panhandler has been. Technically, that is actually a private median because it's in Chaska Commons. Uh because it's a private road, but it would have to be the owner of the Chaska Commons that would actually make the request to.
I guess I didn't think of it, but yeah, that is.
That, that's not a public road.
So everything within the property is, all the roads are pri- private roads inside of that property.
Everything within that property border is all private.
Alright, uh thank you for that. But and she also then went on to say that she lives in a, in an area that had a bunch of homes that were more uh helping elderly and I think they were uh like almost like I would call it assisted living places. And that, she said that that clientele has really changed now and she said that she's she said there's just a lot more crime going on there. Is there ways that we can, do we, I'm sure that they're owned by somebody else? Do we have ways that we have the ability to have a conversation with them and say, you know, what's going on?
Well, I think those are actually owner occupied units. So I think they're owner occupied.
It's Hidden Creek.
Yeah, me, you can talk a little bit about, we did some checking into this.
So Hidden Creek, if I am understanding the location correctly, uh is owner occupied, single family homes. They're attached, single family homes, but they're owner occupied. Now there may be folks who own them and rent them out. Um so that's possible, but it's not, it's not any different than a lot of the neighborhoods. We did look through our zoning code and we did look through the uh staff reports that were done at the time. There's nothing in there that indicates any sort of restriction beyond the, you know, owner occupied home.
Now, what I would suggest is um and I, I've seen this, I, I think Congressman Wong, I think you have this in your neighborhood is um if there's issues that pop up in the neighborhood, uh working with the Chaska Police Department to create a Neighborhood Watch group. And so um, you know, we certainly, if, if you have the contact information, we certainly could uh put uh that individual in contact with uh Julie and Martine uh to get them connected up with uh Neighborhood Watch. And a lot of times that is a pretty effective tool.
One thing I want to mention too is, you know, in those situations where you know, the housing is, you know, somewhat age restricted or something like that, like Del Webb. That's in the covenants associated with that neighborhood. So that ends up being more of a private side agreement um tied to those, you know, the ownership of that home. Um not something that the city is managing or, you know, administering or anything like that. So you know, I don't know the nature of whether those covenants are not and if there are, what they say. Um but, you know.
And there may not be an association. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I suspect there's probably an association because there is common property in that area.
But they were built back in the late nineties. And so we found that until there was a, a law that was passed and I can't remember what year that required certain things of sort of common areas. Some of those older uh townhomes don't have real formal associations.
And I don't know, I, I mean, you know, I guess it's one of those, we have to look and see i- is there, is there higher calls for service there? You know, that would be something that, you know, I guess, but alright, well. It's important to kind of ask, because I, like I said, I thought it was all more of, of uh I, I really thought that whole place was more of senior assistant.
Yeah, it's advertised that way.
Is that what it's advertised?
I mean, on the Google machine.
And uh according, according to my caller, that that is not the case anymore. And that's why I wondered if there was some.
It's, there's other properties we've had advertised as fifty five plus that have turned into uh anybody in the past.
Zen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zen, Zen, when that first opened up was a fifty five plus uh one, but it was more marketed that way than it was coveted that way.
Alright, well, we'll just, I guess we'll have to see if there, you know, maybe if you can check and see if there's.
Remind me the name of the development again?
Hidden Creek.
Hidden Creek.
Uh just a couple of things. I um got my granddaughter off and I uh drove through and went by the apartments that, you know, are being built on, in Culver Ridge there. Um I, I have to say, there's some pretty good looking buildings. I mean, they really put some put some nice materials on and make them look nice. The only thing I don't care for is the one that's called the Carver. It's not Carver, it's Chaska. That, that drives me crazy.
He wants to talk with my wife, because my wife came to me and she goes, how could you let an apartment building be called the Carver, the Carver in Chaska?
When I look at it, it's, it's confusing for delivery people. It's confusing for uh public safety. You know, they, if they don't know, they say the Carver and they're gonna go, what? That's what I don't like about it, you know. Um and we also have, I mean, we have roads called Carver. It's uh but the building, the building is very nice, uh except for the name.
They had uh flat, last night I was driving back from the grocery store and it was dark and, you know, they're trying to occupy these now. And so they had all the lights on in that one and it looked really cool.
Yeah, it, they, they, I, I am. They don't look as out of places I was worried about that they'd be. So I.
The one thing that stands out to me, especially as you're driving from the north is, and I know you guys had a bunch of discussion on this, is how high are those road townhomes that are on the east side of the road and how high is the roof on the, on the apartment? They are practically the same level.
I thought the same.
Yeah.
Don't look too far apart.
Yeah.
Anyways, are, are they both being occupied or just carved?
Uh Nate, you, you told me which one was being.
Yeah, the other one is called uh Fendu.
Fendu.
I think Fendu is the one that was being occupied first.
A number of us were uh at Southwest Christian. They had the ribbon cutting for their new uh field house. Uh what a beautiful facility.
That's the nicest field house I've ever seen.
Two weeks earlier, I got a sneak peek of it.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, you think you're walking into a college, I mean, they, they. They did it up pretty nice.
Their team room looked like a professional.
They got stadium seating in it.
It's crazy how like Southwest Christian, what it started as up uh near PV or whatever. And I remember some like the original students there and now into what it is and it's just crazy.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Uh but I, they're all done. I don't think they can build anymore, that I know of. But, yeah, so. Thanks, Mike, for covering me when I was sick at the last meeting and had to miss a bunch of stuff. So sorry about that, but I didn't want to come in here and get you guys sick, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm su- I figured, especially the week before Christmas. I, 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 I ended up with COVID, so I, I just did not want to come in and Matt and I talked about it since day one. I would have been in the very contagious stage, so.
I'm very grateful sitting next to you.
I was pretty grateful. You were really grateful.
I'm sure that you'd have been all the way around. I'm sitting on Nate's.
My microphone.
I'm like, somebody tells me, I do have feelings and, and I respect others, so. But uh and then. Meetings, yeah, not the Grinch. He's somewhere else on this Diaz. Uh but anyways, the um our meeting schedule again with the, with the holidays. So our next meeting would have been Martin Luther King Day, obviously. That's not there. The event's that morning, seven forty five at the Event Center. Um and then, so then we would, we would have our meeting scheduled on the twenty second. And for people that already follow us, there is a fifth Monday, but we're just gonna do a work session right now. So there would not be a full fledged council meeting. And then February, we start off on the fifth, which is our normal day. But then the nineteenth, our ne- our next one is President's Day. So then we move to the um twenty sixth for our second meeting. And then I think once we get into March, we get back to normal schedules again. So uh kind of alternate around with uh schedules and stuff like that, so. Uh with that, I don't have anything. Last call.
I got two quick things. It just popped in my head. Um with time speed, uh the speed sign, who works the speed sign that's coming nearby? The grocery store on Flying Cloud coming into town. I don't think it's operational.
Sixty one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been speeding by.
Well, I just, I drive by that route every day. Are those are?
I think the speed signs are, aren't they?
Where is it?
Right by KFC.
Yeah.
Chaska Building.
That'd be ours. I'll check it out.
It's not working.
I thought they were solar powered. So I was like, it's not been sunny out.
No, I think those were prior solar.
No, I think they, yeah, now that I think about it, they're not.
Just an observation I thought of. And then just a actually kind of reminder, I'm gonna mention Carver. Sorry, it's not connected, I promise. Um but I have some friends that obviously live in Carver and had a rash of kind of home and uh burglary, burglary, or can't say that word. Theft of house invasions. There we go. Thank you. And a couple, a lot of things, just reminders. It's things like, if you leave your car parked outside, are you locked? Don't let them be able to grab your garage door opener so they can open it's coming. I mean, they came in. Um some of these houses, the friends I know, like they were in the house, right? They come in, they, you know, grab things like you think about, like your habits. Where do you hang your, what, put your purse wallet right in your entryway, iPad right in your entryway. So they come in and grab that stuff.
And even lock the door from your house into your garage.
Yep. So just as a reminder, because it, you know, they, they, they had talked and it's kind of talked, obviously Carver, um it's uh Carver County. And they talked a little bit about they see typically uptick um during, when there's no school. Uh and the weather has been nicer. So those typically are things. So just as a reminder, because it did, it made me, we typically try to lock that door, but you're, it's like you walk in and everything that's super valuable sits kind of right, right when you walk in and um so just kind of a friendly reminder, unfortunate heads and friends.
Nine o'clock reminder or something. Lock your doors, make sure your cars are locked. Help me, Chris. What are the other ones? Do you know it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it come, it really comes down to this, like it's that garage door opener, right? You leave, they, they grab that and you might even know it and then they, you know, in this case, they brought the door up just enough so they could shimmy under it because they don't want you to hear it.
Yep.
While you're sleeping and they're in and they're out and they're gone. Um so just it, it's, you know, things to think of and.
Where they are, they just kind of go all over the metro.
Yeah, I think it was, it would have been a week and a half ago. It was kind of a.
Chan got it too?
Yeah.
But just a public information, lock your stuff up, lock your doors, garage door openers, those types of things, just to.
Turn on exterior lights.
There you go. See, there you go. Got them. So thank you. That's, that's what I wanted.
So we got them all? That's what I thought.
You forgot those two.
That's all I have.
Alright, anyone else? Otherwise.
Yep. So it's, I also, I went by the Costco site and saw that Springs at McKnight uh lake that there's new townhouses, like rental townhouses look really, really nice. So that's coming along and like actually seeing walls going up on Chas- uh on the Costco. It's actually really nice too. So and they have the big sign out there saying Costco coming soon, so.
They're already advertising for people.
Yeah, that's.
I'm ready for my hot dog and pop.
Isn't that gonna be tip up?
I thought it was going to. I was a little shocked when I saw them.
Parts of it are, it looks like.
Yeah.
Well, they jump around. They do a wall here and a wall there and I, I, I never, I mean, I get it, maybe the wall on the townhouse side, they're gonna do a little nicer, yeah. That's another story.
Right for my hot dog and pop.
Alright, anything else? Anyone want to make a motion to go home?
What's your turn?
Second. Okay, I got a motion by customer growth, second by customer one, turn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign. See you in a couple of weeks.